First item of business is approval of the minutes from June 8th, 2021, which consisted of the public hearing informational meeting for the Haywood Hospital expansion, public meeting for 100 and 112 for Det Street, and our regular meeting.
And make a motion we accept all the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded that we accept all the minute meetings from June 8th. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And again, approval of minutes. This one for June 22nd, our public meeting for the Haywood Hospital expansion and our regular meeting again for June 22nd. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded that we accept the minutes. Any discussion? Again, by voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. New business, Bank of America ATM. Any color or commentary for us, Mr. Borogad?
Chairman, just real quick, just a quick background. Back in 2011, the planning board approved a site plan for the Price Chopper Plaza. Part of that site plan approval process included some conditions, and one of the conditions was that any additional variances applied for signage on the site need to be approved by the planning board prior to going to the zoning board of appeals. So Bank of America has representatives here tonight to present the plan to the planning board, and it will be up to the planning board to, I guess, approve what they're proposing so they can then proceed to the ZBA for a variance approval. And if you do not approve, then maybe we look at other alternatives for the signage at the site.
All right, very good. Thank you for the background. And this gentleman is?
Yep, Jake Modesto with Stonefield Engineering. I'm here representing the applicant and Bank of America.
Good evening. Please go on.
All right, so again, as Trevor had noted, that this is that parcel of the shopping center. Really, on paper, it's the entire shopping center, but, you know, from a tax perspective, we are actually a separate parcel. There was a subdivision that happened after the creation of the Price Chopper facility. So this parcel that we're actually sitting on is a 1.36 acre parcel. Now, where development is, how noted here in the crosshatch, is closer to the Sherman Street and Main Street intersection where we're developing. We have ample parking on site, I'm happy to say that, both in the shopping center and what we're proposing, which is a walk-up Bank of America ATM kiosk located directly, we'll call it in the front row of parking along Sherman Street. I do just want to flip to what is a rendering, looking from what would be Main Street heading away from Price Chopper. So this would be Main Street and then Sherman. So the application really is a walk-up ATM. We are losing three parking spaces, replacing that with the Concrete Island four ATM. The ATM will stand approximately 11 feet and 4 inches in height. It's about an eight and a half by 11, or four foot, like box. Now, there is a slight canopy over, there's no walk-in, it's all exterior facing. We have these all across the country, they work beautifully. As part of the application, we are proposing some lighting improvements to provide extra security for our bank patrons. And then, of course, our six-foot-high monument sign located at that hard corner of Main Street and Sherman Street. So those are really the scope of the improvements that we are proposing. I have another rendering just to take a different angle. These are close to what's going to actually be proposed. The total sign size is about, just, it was really just under 30 square feet, so it's 29.7 square feet, and that's for this sign. Now, also, the ATM itself, we will be proposing what I call is a band across the top of the ATM. It's, you can see this almost all the ATMs across the country. If we can see the submitted plans. Just for the color of the signage. So you can see that band across the top, just a simple Bank of America logo on both what would be inward-facing towards the shopping center, which is right here in the middle, and then the side with the simple Bank of America logo, which would be facing Main Street. So that area is all the signage that we're proposing. We're calling this building signage and the freestanding monument sign. Can I answer any questions anyone has?
Could you mind asking that other one? You want that? Do you?
This one?
Yeah, they do have 11 by 7 in printout. As we can print it clockwise, this is the first actual folded here.
Now, we got it in three days. Thank you.
Please go ahead, Mr. Vice Chairman.
If I heard you right, the, that ATM is really out in the open. And this being New England, and in case you didn't realize, God knows it's 1,000 feet above sea level, and a winter's here a little more unbearable than it are even in Pittsburgh. Down the hill, so to speak. When Bank of America had the ATM on Main Street, it was, obviously, it was part of a building and a section of it, we had, you had separate doors and locking doors. What is the big deal, or why can't you enclose it indoors to make it more bearable for your customers, particularly in the wintertime? And enclosing indoors would actually provide additional security while they're transacting their business.
So the exact reason, so this is, you know, what we call is one of our larger models, when it comes to the ATM kiosks, they come in different sizes and models. I think what you're looking at is the old-school vestibules, where you actually walk in. Bank of America no longer proposes those as a freestanding. I don't have the exact reasons, I believe it was a security risk or something like that. So this particular model was identified for this location to service the customers. I understand the weather, I grew up in the Berkshires, it gets cold, but they've identified this as being the proper fit for its customers. And other than that, I'd have to, like, really talk to bank security and...
I'm a Bank of America customer, and that would never entice me to go there, especially in the wintertime. Just to let you know, I am a Bank of America customer. Unless you change it.
I hope not tonight.
Anything else from board members?
No, that's them for me.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
The access for the ATM is strictly going to be off of Sherman Street, am I correct, as far as a patron going to take money?
So there's no change to the current access to the site? So it's from a top-down, there's no change minus loss of three parking spaces? So we're actually just basically infilling two of the parking spaces with the kiosk itself?
So there's no access to the ATM, if you would, from the parking lot? Physical?
Yeah, it's sitting inside the parking lot, just from a top-down.
So you walk up to it from?
Yeah, exactly. Let me just, I'll go to the top with the overview of the plan. Probably the best way to show it. This is, again, the plan that we submitted, kind of a top-down. Just going to welcome the board member here. So it's going to be sitting within the actual parking field.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not going to protrude towards Sherman Street, we've kept it more or less in the same development line that was previously established.
So you have to drive by after the parking lot?
Exactly.
So this, when rendering here, is slightly off?
It is slightly off.
Okay. I still want doors.
So, Mr. Chairman, so I'm just wondering again, this came up 2011. So what's the reasoning for Bank of America coming back to us? They made some changes, because I didn't quite hear what you said, or Trevor?
I can address that.
Thank you.
So back when Price Chopper Plaza was permitted, they exceeded the square footage of signage, so they needed to go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance. And so as a condition on the site plan approval, the planning board conditioned the project so any additional signage at the site would go before the planning board prior to going to the ZBA for an additional variance, just so the planning board could have a say on the aesthetics and, you know, the various aspects of the new signage.
So what's in front of us really is the sign.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from staff?
I have a couple, Mr. Jim. So the height of the sign is about?
Six feet.
Six feet.
Six foot. There's about a 30-inch gap between what we'll call the base and the actual sign itself. So that's this little gap right here, and the total sign's about 41 inches in height.
Is it illuminated, just from the interior?
It's internally illuminated, yes.
How far back from the edge of the?
10 feet.
10 feet from the edge of?
Of the right way.
Sidewalk or the?
The property line.
Okay. Both sides, Jake, are they?
Yeah, so the closest point it will ever be to the property line, it's further back actually from the sidewalk, is 10 feet, and that's right, we call it the rounded corner of the intersection.
Okay. And width-wise, so 6 feet high?
6 feet high, it's approximately 1 foot in width, including some of what we'll call the decals, which is the Bank of America kind of protrudes, the actual logo itself does protrude a little bit. And then it's approximately 180 inches or 9 feet in width.
9 feet?
9 feet.
Is that a standard Bank of America sign?
That is a standard Bank of America.
Or do they come any smaller?
I believe they come in smaller, I would have to refer to the actual sign, there's a whole branding package we'd have to look at. There's a, you know, a mix between, you know, sightlines and, you know, the actual product being proposed.
The reason why I ask is, to me, it seems kind of overkill for an ATM, an outdoor ATM to have a sign of that size. I mean, your sign's almost as big as the ATM itself.
And the reason I wanted to show this view here is, is you have the Price Chopper sign way back in the distance here. It's really big, and you can barely see it here, just to direct everyone so we understand, where is he? I can barely even find it on this, turn it up, say, on the Price Chopper sign, it's way back here. I understand that it's a little grainy, but you can see it's all the way back here.
Yep.
And it is much bigger in size. So I think it was triple in size. So it's basically, this is us kind of, you know, being within almost 100 feet, it looks a little bit larger, but, you know, as you gradually step back away, you know, the predominance of the sign does kind of fade away.
I look from a proportional standpoint, I don't think it's that, in that picture. I'm just thinking of it as a human standing next to it, it's going to seem very large.
Yeah. It'll be more or less my height, you know, that is the sign.
I'm going to be looking up at the top, so...
Is there any particular reason your client, that you're aware of, that your client settled on that size sign?
Due to sightline.
Sorry?
Due to sightline.
Okay.
For this property, there's a clear stretch, there's only two entrances. If you actually look, they're several hundred feet away from the actual ATM itself, so wayfinding in a particular location like this is key to provide, you know, bank customers, if you're, because really, if you're heading, I guess it would be westbound, you'd want to make it at the light, right? You'd want to make the turn-in, otherwise you're coming all the way down to Sherman, you have to hook up, you know, through the shopping center. You're going to want to go to the lights, probably the easiest one. Same thing here, is you'll see it, you know, if you're heading eastbound, you want to see it. Again, really, sightlines drives this and its location to access.
Still think it's too big.
Was there any thought into putting, like, some, instead of doing the interior illumination, exterior illumination, do they do anything like that? Any of their locations?
I've done that in other locations, you know, to be very frank with you, it's kind of frowned upon usually in most municipalities, so we don't normally propose that, just because you have, they're not downshielded lights, you have two shields pointing out, especially with the residents nearby, you know, that's kind of the thought is...
I'm not making any recommendations, I'm just asking the question, that's all.
Yeah, we prefer not to have that, if possible.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Should probably vote on that. So really, what's before us is, do we approve the proposal for their sign so that they can then, the proponent can then go to the ZBA and ask for a variance for that sign?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this project.
All right, that was from Mr. Paul Cormier, made that motion. Do I have a second? Very well, I'll second it.
Did they meet all the?
Sorry, Bob?
Did they meet all the suggested improvements that?
They did, yeah, from the department head meeting that we had, yeah, they did.
Second.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? I think we can do this by voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
And one nay. Motion carries. All right, next item of business, site plan approval, the Haywood Hospital expansion project. I'm going to reconvene the public hearing for special permit for the Haywood Hospital expansion project. Peer review is still being reviewed, so the proponent has asked for a little more time to digest the peer review recommendations and comments. So what I think we should do is probably carry this forward to August, that will give Hannigan Engineering time to review the peer review and respond. Any comments on that, gentlemen? Questions?
We need a motion for that?
Yeah, please.
Make a motion, postpone it till August?
I'll second.
Continue it.
Continue it. All right, motion made by Mr. Bitez and seconded by Mr. Schwartz, that we continue this, continue the public hearing for the Haywood Hospital expansion project to our August meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll do it by voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, 3.3 is the other public hearing, which is a special permit for Haywood Hospital's microgrid project. As you recall, I'm going to reconvene that at this time. And again, it's the same situation as with the expansion project. Hannigan Engineering would like some more, would like some time to digest the peer review that just arrived, so they are asking that we, that we continue this until our August meeting, to give him time to review and respond to those recommendations.
Mr. Jim, just for the record, it's tie and bond on this, on that project.
Oh, it's tie and bond on the microgrid?
Yeah, microgrid, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I apologize. For the record, tie and bond, not Hannigan on the microgrid project. Any questions, comments, concerns from the board? Very good. I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion, start it till August meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we continue the microgrid project public hearing to our August meeting. Any discussion? Very good. Again, by voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 3.4, the Montague Joint Transportation Committee, appoint a planning board member.
So I think I sent the information off to the board as far as how often they meet and?
I'll raise my hand.
What time they meet.
So I need another meeting to go to?
I was going to say, Mr. Schwartz needs another meeting, must be getting bored.
Hey, find it interesting.
Yeah. Good.
Someone else wants it, you're welcome.
Maybe after, maybe after I retire.
Well, yeah, I'm retired, so...
Mr. Chairman, have we all done this gentleman? Are you sure you'll stick around or?
Oh, we already voted, so. You can hang around and listen if you'd like. Certainly your call.
We're almost done.
All right, thank you for volunteering, Mr. Schwartz. All right, 3.5, ordinance development overlay district one, that we had the joint hearing with city council earlier. No, that was last week, last Tuesday. Mr. Borogad, have some thoughts on that?
Well, I think I expressed my thoughts at the public hearing. As you all know, currently, the way we track development overlay districts along with any other overlay district, like the solar overlays, we include them on an overlay map. So if anybody from the public wants to know how many and where the overlays are, they can just go to the map, which I think is the best way to show them, since, you know, it shows the location rather than having them in writing. My own opinion is that, you know, by placing them in the zoning code book, you're basically duplicating efforts, and you're rewriting the code book every time a zoning overlay is produced or actually created and approved, which, again, I think is duplicative and unnecessary.
If I understand, stood Councilor Graves correctly, what he was asking to be put in the books was when the city council put a condition on an overlay district, and just the city council, which I understand is a pretty rare event. Was that everyone else's understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I've been spoiled by having a planning director guide me through all these things. If I was coming in, you know, off the street and wanted to see something, what would I do? Because I really don't know. If I was a member of the general public and I said, "I want to look at overlay district", what have you, how does that work?
Well, I, hopefully, they'd contact either my office or the building commissioner's office, and we'd either show them if they're there in person, or we'd direct them to the website and bring them to the zoning map.
I can add one thing.
Yeah, Mr. Coughlin.
The map is public online from the city's website under our GIS department, and it's just a layer in there, you check a box, and all the overlays pop right up.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Steve Cormier.
We were at the city council meeting, and Councilor Graves came forward and said it was a housekeeping method, cleaning up the housekeeping more than anything else. But as he explained it, it made sense what he was saying, but the same idea, to have to duplicate or triplicate the same effort as what the map shows and what planning director has in his file doesn't make any sense at all. I think that the way it is now, by leaving it on the map, that someone could look and see where it is, and then if they were interested in coming into the city, they'd discuss it with the director, is probably the best way to go without creating another loop or a lot more work for a lot of people.
Well, ease of information access is the, is the crux of it, I think.
Yeah. I don't think the map is the issue. The issue is identifying the conditions or the restrictions on each overlay, whatever type of overlay it is. That's the issue, of where do we, where do we put that information? Councilor Graves suggested that it go in the zoning code document, and his director, Trevor, I mean, Mudrow, has said that, Bureau Guard, rather, excuse me, that it's, all one has to do is to go to the, either the building commissioner or the director of planning development and ask them about a particular overlay and get that information. So, and I, I personally am a type of person that I would like to go one-stop shopping and go to one place, and maybe the document, but I don't know if that's, is the real or the correct way to do that, or the most efficient way. Whether the current way is fine, I don't know that either. I'm really on the fence, so I think we need to, we need to have more discussion amongst ourselves as to which way to go with this particular issue.
And the third option is the GIS mapping that Mr. Coughlin brought up. I'd forgotten about that.
What, that's the current option, though?
That's the current.
The current option, or come to you and look at physical tracks?
Yeah.
But you would do, you would do that electronically, of course?
Yeah.
And that identifies every type of overlay the city has, which is on the zoning map?
Yes, and one thing we discussed internally that I believe came up at that last public hearing was maybe just adding a link to, so if, say, you clicked on a commercial overlay district, that link could pull you to the code section, just to save a little bit of time. That's something that's sort of low-hanging fruit for us to add, to make it a little bit easier. Might be a good middle ground.
That definitely has appeal to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll say that the current process in place has been in place for a decade-plus, and we've never really had any issues with it. It works fine.
You know, if there's a way to make it a little easier, as Mr. Coughlin said, that's a low-hanging fruit, and that's administrative chore that doesn't have to...
I think we'll do that one way or the other.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a huge deal or a burden on anyone's department, right? Good. All right, so what we need to do is, we need to make a recommendation to the city council of yea or nay.
I make a motion that we send the council a notice saying we do not approve of the overlay.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bitez and seconded by Mr. Paul Cormier, that this is a no on the altered ordinance for development overlay district one. Is there any further discussion? Do we want to hash this out some more before we vote? May not need to, but...
This is just for District One, overlay District One.
That's what it says.
And what are we approving or disapproving?
I think the motion was to recommend not to approve the amendment.
Correct.
Oh, Councilor Graves suggested amendment.
Correct.
Oh, okay. I can do that now.
All right, any further discussion, gentlemen? All right, let's do this by roll call. Mr. Bitez?
Yea.
Mr. Paul Cormier?
Nay.
Mr. Steve Cormier?
Nay.
And Mr. Schwartz?
Yea to disapproval, right?
So, does everybody understand what the motion is?
Yeah, I was surprised to hear all these nays. Let's back up a bit.
That's why I didn't vote yet.
The motion was to disprove the ordinance.
Yeah, the vote was a no, no, the proposal, the motion, let's try this again, the motion was a no on Councilor Graves' request.
So recommend not to approve the amendment.
So yea is not to approve, and a nay is to approve.
Thank you.
So on yea.
So, shall we start again?
Kind of nervous starting, huh?
Just, yeah, does everybody understand what the motion is?
Do you understand, yes.
I understand which way it's going, yes.
Are we all clear on that before we vote again?
Still.
Mr. Bitez?
Still, yea.
Mr. Paul Cormier?
So what did Mr. Bitez say? I'm sorry.
He said yes.
Yes.
Mr. Steve?
Stand with my yes. Stand with my yes.
Yeah, I'll make it unanimous. Next meeting, Tuesday, August 10th at 7:00 PM. Are we all good with that?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn and second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. Good evening. We'll see you next time.